Mrs. Wheeler.
Here.
Dr. Wagley.
Here.
Dr. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Conkle.
Here.
Mr. Canwisheer.
Here.
Mr. Ayers. Mrs. Brockman.
Here. Please rise and join me for the board.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move the board approve. Approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Move the regular agenda, not the consent agenda.
All right.
Okay, screw that one.
A motion by Director Smith, second by Director Canwisheer, that we approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Vision statement. It is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state. Not in some things, but in everything. Not for some students, but for every student. Welcome to our guests tonight. If you would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now would be your opportunity to do so. All right, and so I will move on to board directors. Mrs. Wheeler, did you have any comments?
I do not, thank you.
Director Conkle.
I am thinking of our high school students, our teachers, and their parents this week as they get ready for finals, and I hope everyone feels relaxed and ready to go in a sense of accomplishment when they move on to the next step.
Yes, good luck. Yours is next. Did you have anything else?
I can pass for that. Nothing tonight, thanks.
And Director White and Wagley.
I think maybe Mr. Schreep mentioned this, but I know Ms. Reyes is here today, and as you guys saw on the consent agenda, she is retiring after thirty-three years at the district. I personally, I'm happy she's here today, and just want to let you know what a wonderful legacy that you've been leaving to our district. You've inspired so many kids, you've affected countless lives, and your dedication to our district is more than words can ever say. So, as I know that it's bittersweet, you certainly deserve the retirement that you're going to be having to kind of relax and enjoy all the relationships that you've made over the years, but just want to let you know that we're really going to be missing you. You're going to leave a big void. I know that we'll look at somebody to replace you, but just wanted to let you know how much at least me as a parent of the district, how wonderful you've been to all the students and just in the countless lives you've changed.
Moving on, Mrs. Kern must not want to talk.
No, she had to check on her kids, I think.
Mrs. Kenyon.
No, I don't have anything, thank you.
And Mrs. Smith.
I have.
And Mr. Hyatt.
I would just echo Dr. Wagley's comments to Ms. Reyes, having been a parent of a student of hers as well, grateful for her years of service and her service to my own child and her. She's always so student-centered, and we just appreciate that legacy and modeling that she's done that has impacted so many for years to come. Thank you for being here.
And Mr. Cohen and Smith.
I have nothing.
Okay. Mrs. Damon.
There's an updated personnel agenda, and I'll thank Mrs. Reyes, who had my two oldest children up a few years ago and the rest.
I do have two things tonight, and I'll leave Wendy for last, but also retiring this evening would be Teresa Sack. Teresa Sack has been with us for twenty-two years at Pleasant View Elementary in our special needs program, in the Level Two ID program. And has done an amazing job. Just a true ultimate professional individual. She's done a great job with our kids, and we should be missed next year. And yes, Ms. Reyes is retiring after thirty-three years in Pleasant Valley. That's just the teaching career side of it. If I remember correctly, eight at Cody, is that twenty at Pleasant View?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, and then yes, nice thirty, and then three now at Forest Grove, so that is her thirty-three years. But Wendy is also a graduate of Pleasant Valley, longtime family, and also I believe hopefully going to have some grandchildren coming through the district in not too long of a future. So Wendy, as everyone has said so eloquently, I probably can't say it that eloquently, so I just want to say thank you to you for all you've done. I really missed, and just be very proud and reflect every single day, and now it's the last day for you the rest of this year, and look forward to your next chapter of your life, enjoying your grandchildren. This is one of the things she's going to do with grandchildren down in St. Louis, by the Corvus area here in town, and just getting out and being a grandparent. So, congratulations. Six of them, yes.
By March.
Isn't that awesome?
Do not look old enough to have six.
No.
And I was also a parent of yours.
She was, I believe it was Madison, sixth grade at Pleasant View, so thank you.
Been a wonderful thirty-three years.
I was just going to say, did you want to say anything?
Very true, and very honored and proud to work for this room for thirty-three years, and like, you know, like you all expressed, it's a bittersweet time, but I'm ready to move on to another chapter, more relaxed schedule, and Brian had asked me what the biggest thing, biggest thing for me working here has been, and it's the relationships that I've built with colleagues and parents and students. I've kept relationships going with some students that are now forty years old, you know, they have kids of their own and their in their own careers and things, and that's, you go get that with every job, so thank you.
Thank you so much for all your years, and especially blessing us at Pleasant Valley those years, so will be missed. You've been a staple in the district since I had kids start at Pleasant View as well, so thank you so much. Mrs. Broskern, did you have anything this evening?
Yes, I had.
Oh, sorry, I said you didn't.
Oh, no, no problem. I had a couple of items. Earlier in the fall, we talked about some students who were going, who had qualified to attend the hands-on skills portion of the Iowa Skills USA. It's an automotive skills contest. We had two students who captured fifth place. The competition was held at DMAC, and it was hosted by the Automobile Dealers Association, and they were among more than two hundred students from fourteen Iowa schools who competed. In fifth place, they each received numerous tools and supplies that were donated by the Iowa Automobile Dealers Association, as well as scholarships provided by the DMAC Foundation. So congratulations to Carson Roman and Jack Winslow on that accomplishment. In addition, I wanted to recognize some students who participated in the Make Forty-Eight Innovation Experience, which is hosted by Corteva AgroScience. The students were challenged to come up with a small solution to help improve nutrition, sustainability, or climate resilience in agriculture, and the students were tasked with brainstorming, designing, and building a small prototype of their idea, and the best idea with the most potential to go to market ends up winning. And the grand finale was at the Corteva Headquarters in Johnson, Iowa in December, and PB was among the four finalist schools who gave their pitches to a panel of professionals. Malia Johnson, Taylor Garrison, Jaren McGruber, and Rory Midury designed an innovation to planting corn, and they were awarded the top prize, meaning that they won the innovation award. So congratulations to our students' accomplishments.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? No questions, I will take a motion. Motion by Director Canwisheer, second by Director Conkle to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And any opposed? Approval of bills. I will take the general fund.
I move the general fund warrants to be issued in a total amount of two hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eleven cents in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Director Wagley, second by Director Conkle, that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nutrition fund.
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars, fifty-eight cents of payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Smith, second by Director Wheeler, that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Elementary Junior High Activity Fund.
I want the elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of six thousand, four dollars and thirty-two cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Conkle, second by Director Wagley, that, or I'm sorry, elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? High School Activity Fund.
I move the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of forty-five thousand dollars, forty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-seven cents in the payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Wheeler, second by Director Canwisheer, that high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Management Fund.
I want the management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of seventeen thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Wagley, second by Director Smith, that management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Capital Projects Fund.
I move the capital project fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one million, nine hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Canwisheer, second by Director Conkle, that capital project fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Physical Plant and Equipment Levy Fund.
I move that Pebble Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of ten thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-six cents in payment of invoices as presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Smith, second by Director Conkle, that Physical Plant and Equipment Levy Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Debt Service Fund.
I move that the debt service fund warrants be issued in the total amount of thirty-nine thousand, four dollars in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Wagley, second by Director Canwisheer, that debt service fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Student Construction Fund.
I move the student construction fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Wheeler, second by Director Smith, that student construction fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Internal Service Fund.
I want the internal service fund warrants six-six-two-seven to six-six-two-nine and one-six-four-eight-three-six and ACH three-two-five-two through three-two-five-seven be issued in the total amount of five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-four cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Wagley, second by Director Conkle, that internal service fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Trust Fund.
I want the trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Conkle, second by Director Smith, that trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, we have no old business this evening, so we're going to move right into new business, and the student and parent handbook updates. Tony.
Yeah.
And Heather.
So I'll summarize this. You have the proposed changes, the document, with specifics regarding the handbook changes that we are making. uh, with specifics regarding the handbook changes that we are making with regard to the attendance policy, and this is in response to Senate File twenty-four thirty-five, um, that took place. And so, I'm just gonna give a little summary of these changes and the why, and talk even about the most latest and greatest um, impact that it's had on student. So our why is common with that of Senate File twenty-four thirty-five in that the goal is to ensure student attendance is at its highest level, is safe and healthy. And then more specifically to reduce chronic absenteeism, that was the target in this. So our team's goal, we have a team composed of pre-K through twelfth grade, um, administrating, administrative staff, SRO, Belmont Administrative Staff, that continually revisit um, this policy and the practice. To see is, how, how is it working, is the policy changes, are the policy changes that we made um, helping, and are they aligned with this legislation? So our goal has been to develop a policy that is not only compliant, but that makes sense for kids and moves the needle for um, student attendance and performance in school, which we know have a high correlation. Um, the proposed changes that are in this document that's been shared with you outline practices with the law that reflect the following, early intervention is the most effective intervention, we want to catch these issues because we know that attendance is often just the surface level. We need to drill down into this and come up with a solution that helps the students and any other constituents um, support that student so that their attendance improves early. And so, we went with the practice of measuring this by semester as opposed to the full year in order to reflect that. So we have a letter at five days of absence and the goal of that letter, um, that is not mandated. Um, that is, the goal of that letter is that early intervention reflection. We're trying to catch kids and just make parents, guardians aware, um, that their student is at that many days of absence if they are not already. Um, and then aligning with the legislation which outlines ten percent, fifteen percent, and twenty percent benchmarks, which when you look at our semester, the alignment in days is nine, thirteen, and eighteen days absent in a semester. A key uh, document or a key action that is taken, um, when a student hits that uh, chronic absenteeism mark is called a SEM, S-E-M, for School Engagement Meeting. This includes all stakeholders and is solution focused. Our goal is to seek out supports to improve attendance of the student and think outside of the box. We wanna have some creative thinking, think about their interests, get to the why, you know, like I said earlier, attendance is often the symptom. We wanna drill down into that and see how can we help the kiddo um, get to school. Um, whether that's a will or a skill or some other kind of outlier, um, that is causing that attendance concern. Um, so with regard to that, um, we do have a new attendance tracking sheet that we developed in compliance with the legislation that is there, that is updated monthly. Um, it's updated weekly in the schools and then monthly out of our office here at Belmont. And appropriate and additional needs for benchmarks are sent to the Scott County Attorney's Office in compliance with that piece of the legislation. We will reset, um, because we determined that the grading period, or I'm sorry, the attendance period is a semester. We will reset that at the end of this semester, which is coming up. Another key document that we have, uh, in order, as, as we hold those SEMs, those school engagement meetings, is the um, Absenteeism Prevention Plan, we love acronyms in education, right, so the APP. Um, and the Absenteeism Prevention Plan is the document that where, when we have that school engagement meeting, we put the action steps in place that we're going to do to support the um, the student in making in attendance improvements. Um, and then, of course, we do have the Scott County Attorney Office Communications that we have that take place monthly that I indicated. And if we were to engage in an uh, actual truancy case, um, there would be other communications that might take place with, with that office. So our job, and uh, a clarification as you look through this attendance, the philosophy, the policy um, itself, good policy is overarching and allows us autonomy, that is student-centered to serve the student right. Our job is to record and report, not to judge. Um, and exemptions and other details have required our team revisiting with consultation with a couple of organizations and uh, specifically the Department of Education naturally, and then school, uh, School Administrators of Iowa. Our two um, organizations that we have consulted with along this journey. Um, exemptions has been a, a hot topic across the state. And exemptions are subtracted from overall absences before submission with the Scott County Attorney Office. So that's, that's a really important piece of this when you get to the enactment of the policy. And as we navigate these changes, we are encountering various scenarios where we collectively assess and act in a manner that holds students and parents accountable. That accountability piece is there for a reason, um, ultimately doing what's best for the students. So, I'm, I'm happy to report to you today that as we enter this last week of the semester, we are down forty-four students from a hundred and thirty-one at this week last year to eighty-seven in a district um, of our size at that fifteen percent or thirteen absence mark from last year. And we're down one hundred and fourteen students from two hundred and one to that eighty-seven number, um, from two years ago. So, that is, uh, we only have one chronically absent student in our district to date after the exemptions. And so, you know, I think the awareness, the communication that we've had between home and school, that's a kudos to our, our parents and guardians as well for their clear communication back and forth, it takes a village, um, and it's working. So I would conclude with, before any questions that you might have, just by saying thank you to all that have been so supportive in this, this change. And we, we are seeing some positive outcomes with it. What questions do you have?
So I noticed there's a medical exemption, does the medical exemption include mental and health, you know, mental health sessions? Is that in the medical umbrella?
Yes.
And then as long as we receive a note from a doctor, or the student is sent home from our nurse, those would also be exempt in those situations. I had the two biggest, one of the biggest things is we're hoping this legislation, they will take out of the legislation that you have to send things home via certified mail, because of the cost of that. And a lot of those letters get returned to us and we spend seven dollars or so or more on a certified letter, so not just our district, asking that it's across the state. Um, and I think the other one we struggle with is probably the exemption of people wanna have a vacation exempted, and that's very difficult by the state, they do not exempt those. And that is probably the hardest part to have a conversation with families about, because it's just tough, it's not exempt.
Has there been any um, notification from the Scott County Attorney's Office on how they're gonna handle this onslaught of um, letters, cause you know, we have to notify them after the thirteen days and then after the eighteen days and I'm assuming that all of this recently, I don't do that, so luckily we don't have a big problem, but there's other districts that have a huge problem. Have they talked about how they're gonna handle that?
Yeah, so it's, local control is the key to that, to answer that question. So, every district has their way of developing, and that's, we, we call it the PVCSD Attendance Tracking Sheet is what we use, and that starts at the building, so the principal or dean or assigned designee and the attendance secretary get together weekly, and they review and update this tracking sheet. And then we update it here in this office, and our office sends it on to the Scott County Attorney's Office. Other districts may handle that differently, that's been the device, that's been the, the way in which we've gone reporting and communicating that with consistency, and so far it seems to be working pretty efficiently now that we've got things up and running with it.
But I believe in the law, you have to, all the districts have to inform the, their, their county attorney's offices.
That is correct, yes.
Right, so, I mean, all these attorneys are gonna be getting this new thing, so do they have, have they communicated with the districts on how they're gonna handle it?
So we met with them, we brought her, the county attorney, in our office here this summer, had a conversation with her. And she approved the process of us sending things down to her. I think when we have someone who actually hits the chronically truancy mark, then they'll go back and look at the data we've sent them. Otherwise, I think it's just kinda them collecting as we go, until they hit that point. I think you're spot on in terms of, we hear some counties where they're not maybe as big as Scott County or as busy as Scott County, who will probably handle it more immediately. Um, but we wonder when, Scott County has a lot of issues on their plate, where will this land in terms of them bringing parents to court and then going down that route? So we have, we, I can't answer that question today, I just know some counties around us are pretty straightforward. When you hit this mark, they're fining them a hundred dollars or having to stay a night in jail, so. I just don't know where we will land in Scott County.
I do appreciate the layout of the updates and changes you made, it was very easy to read and follow, and I think it'll be easy for parents to follow, because there are a lot of questions that I've received about what counts as an absence, what doesn't, um, will this be excused, how will they address this? And um, I just tell parents not to worry, the goal isn't punish people, the goal is to prevent chronic absenteeism. And so if there's valid reasons, no one's going to be knocking on your door, it's just we do the best we can to get kids to school.
Communicate, 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 so just emphasize to parents to communicate with the offices. And speaking of communication, our director of communication gets all the kudos for the awesome layout.
We actually used that slide at a PTA meeting at Riverdale Heights and had Liz Bornoff come and, and do a presentation for parents, and they really appreciated it. It was very easy, to your point, to understand and to see the changes, so, good job to everybody involved.
Any other questions?
So I'd mentioned when I went to the conference, just sort of planning that they're seeing a shift of students now coming to school sick. So I think my question is, do we yet know if we're seeing that same scenario, right? I'm, so I keep my kid home sick, I'm not gonna send him to the doctor, I'm just gonna send him to school then and let Z spread. Have we had any feedback from nurses on that yet?
I have not received any of that, we're, they're worrying about kids coming.
Yeah, I, I have not as either, Bernie, I don't know if you've heard anything, it's secondary, and I think that exemption piece is key to that.
Well, the exemption piece only counts if you go get the doctor's note, but if your kid's got a cold, they're running a temperature that's high, you might keep him home for a day without taking him to the doctor, right, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, or a school nurse can approve, because we don't wanna create any financial hardship, but yes, and I have not heard.
If we haven't seen that, then great, that may have been a problem for us.
No, and, and a lot of times families will keep their children home for a day or two and then take them to the doctor. And if they bring the note back, we exempt them for all the days that they were sick then as well.
So Tony, the success that we've had, I think, that year over year that you mentioned, as far as what do you attribute this to that to?
The last three years, I think there is a heightened awareness, I mean, this is speculative, but I, we had a lot of communication upfront. And so, it's kind of, in response to Doug's question there a, a moment ago too, I think there's a heightened awareness of it. And maybe on those questionable days, if there is not an actual symptom, a parent is more likely to ha, either have it assessed or to send, send the kid on to school. And so, um, you know, bottom line is, the numbers indicate, and we don't see an influx of any kind of illness, uh, the attendance rates are in a bet, in better place than they were last year. And the year previous to that, so it's a, it's a trend in the right direction.
One point for anyone who's listening to it, just that there where, when Tony mentioned that we'll have a reset at second semester here, that is for students who had five or nine days of absence, if they had the thirteen day, um, meeting with, with the district by the buildings, that thirteen will continue on into second semester. But we've prorated every single week, so we know what, how many absences they can have before they hit the twenty percent of chronically absent. So, each week it's like, okay, this week it's eighteen, next week it's nineteen, it's twenty, it's twenty-one, so we will move that through. They do not get their reset at thirteen.
So it's a rolling scale?
It's a rolling, yeah, exactly correct, a rolling scale the rest of second semester.
If not, I'll take a motion.
I move the board approve updates to the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five student and parent handbooks as presented.
Motion by Director Wheeler, second by Director Conkle, that the board approve updates to the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five student and parent handbooks as presented. Vote, all vote, please.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Dr. Wagley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle?
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six at-risk dropout prevention program proposal.
All right, I gotta go, but Mr. Struce is going to help me through this as well, right?
You will do great.
This is his favorite area to talk about, so, um, so you'll see in your packet, you have the twenty-three, twenty-four year-end at-risk reports, um, along with the twenty-four, twenty-five working budget numbers, and then the um, twenty-five, twenty-six school year, our application for that. So really what we're looking for tonight is the approval of the at-risk um, application and the request of the MSA for the amount of one million one hundred and thirty-two thousand six hundred and seventeen, or six hundred and seventeen dollars, or whatever that adjustment is from the Iowa Department of Ed. So really if you, I think Mr. Struce and Mr. Klingensmith have maybe um, presented this at past board meetings. Um, but really at the top of that chart, you'll see the um, six service areas where we use our at-risk funds. And down on page um, two and three, what we've done for you is just put each of those areas and just given kind of a description of those areas, and then added in the estimated number of s, um, students those programs are serving. So I, I wasn't gonna take the time tonight to talk about these specific areas unless anyone has questions about those areas, but you can see the areas in which we serve those at-risk dropout prevention stu, the areas we serve those students, so does anyone have any questions about these areas? And then you can see if you scroll back to page one, um, I can't take credit for this great spreadsheet that I believe Lori Wakelin works on with um, Mr. Klingensmith and Mr. Struce, and then just explains all the money numbers to all of us, right? But she does a really good job, basically back in the day, um, I think they've, um, again, you've been told before that the state put a cap in place years ago with this funding, and at the time we were at two-point-six percent, being good stewards of the money. Some districts were at five percent, so we got capped at two-point-six percent, and we've never been able to get to the five percent, which means we have to take more out of our general ed budget to cover um, our services with that. So, Brian, do you wanna, do you wanna add anything in with that?
You're doing excellent right now.
Okay, wonderful, so, so what I love about this chart is you really can see the breakdown um, of the, the money with the two-point-six percent. Um, and then down below, if five percent was allowed, where we'd be at. Um, so really, the general fund budget at the two-point-six percent ends up covering basically one million two hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred twenty-six, plus the additional three hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred thirty-nine. And you can see if we were at the five percent model, we would only be having to take seven hundred and twenty-six thousand thirty-seven dollars um, out of the general fund, but we would receive more in property tax. So that little note at the bottom of the chart shows you an example of that on a three-hundred thousand dollar home, what the two-point-six percent would look like, and then what the five percent would look at, like. So basically, that's where we're at, and so we're asking for approval for the MSA amount of the one million one hundred and thirty-two thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars this evening. And if I missed anything, please jump in, either one of you.
Easy to summarize, because we've been stuck in the state has to fix this problem, we pay a million dollars less to our students from the general fund and they have to go to this aid, whereas other districts don't have to.
Correct, so really, yeah, if you look at those two numbers that Jill was mentioning, we pay eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars, or we would save eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars if we're at five percent, and we get a million dollars more. Um, so that is the big difference, I believe it's gonna come up in our legislative session again this year. Sounds like there might be some traction towards that again, whatever that model would look like. I think the biggest reason why they don't, and why it keeps getting stuck every year, is because it's a property tax situation. Um, that is the reason why, so we will have to wait and see how this moves forward, but as Jill mentioned, I mean, we right now, we know what we get from at-risk, but we are covering it out of general fund because we still have to offer the program. So we just track it as at-risk and we're in the hole on that, um, or if we could go to the five percent. And again, being good stewards of money, we'd only right now need four-point-eight of the five, we may have to ask for the full five.
Is it, is this the one where they talked about stair stepping it up?
Exactly correct.
But it never, it never passed?
No.
So there's nothing to zero change. So there's nothing to zero change?
Zero change.
How long have we been having this conversation?
Put the limit into effect in the two thousand thirteen, fourteen fiscal year.
Before I was even born. A long time.
So eleven years or so, it's been that way.
And we don't, um, as far as receiving much feedback. We assume it's a property tax issue, but have they given us that direct feedback or any feedback? You know, or are we just kinda the next year hope again and?
I think two things happen. Number one is I think when you, this is a smaller topic at the legislative sessions. So it gets lost. I think sometimes they hope that they take this and they tie it to another bill, which you see happen a lot of times. I think at the last moment, this is just one that gets pushed off the side, whether it's because of its property tax or because. It's just a small thing that impact everybody, that it just doesn't get.
You know, if we're, however many districts across the state are impacted. It probably doesn't get as much pressure as those things that impact multiple school districts. So how do. We, as a district that is impacting, I don't know. Do you know how many more districts are?
I don't. That's, I was thinking the same thing. We should have pulled that up and say.
Yeah, how do we kinda come together and be like, this isn't something that should be brushed on the rug because it's unfair. To our district. And if we're on the page of trying to make things equitable across the state, how do you make this punishable? How, you know, what is there to say that we should be the ones punished for that? And so we don't want it to get lost, but.
And I, I panel at the ISB regarding, for some reason, the number of close to fifty percent, we're at the five percent mark. I could be wrong, but I think, I think it's about fifty percent or fifty percent are under that.
This would be a good sheet to have, to be armed with if we make it to day on the hill. This is something that we can talk to legislators about because this is black and white. Where at and this what we're missing.
Um, there was a, another issue, if you guys remember several years ago, when busing was an issue. And that didn't really affect us, but affected a lot of other districts. And so that was another situation where not every district was affected, but they were able to get enough traction where they actually made a mission to solve the busing issue. So I consider this to be in the same realm where it's not affecting all the districts, but even if close to fifty percent of them are affected. And we're dealing with, you know, at-risk kids here. And so, and demographics have changed over the last twelve years. And districts that may not have, you know, us, it didn't need so much, everything's changed. And so I just hope that. Our congressional people will listen so that we can, you know, take um, the money that's need. I mean, we're giving the money for the need, but, but taking appropriate money from that group and not taking it away from the general fund, which is taking it away from. The rest of the students.
When you consider the needs post-COVID.
Exactly.
And how many support, how much increased support is needed to meet the needs of those students?
And when you look at the numbers that we put in under the services of intensive academic interpersonal support and then intensive guidance. You know, those numbers, I, we could go back and compare those numbers to, to previous years, but that, I mean, that's a. That's a population of kids, right? We're not talking about one or two. We're talking about several of our students that are receiving those services, so.
And you can tie it to mental health. It's clearly been a hot topic and you're putting towards that. Talk about the chronic absenteeism we just talked about. Again, if kids aren't at risk, that doesn't happen. When you see that happening and also mental health services don't get to kids either. So it's kind of all comes together. This money could help us in both those realms.
Any other questions on this?
All right. If not, I will take a motion to.
Second.
Motion by Director Conkle, second by Director Canwisher. That the board approves the at-risk dropout prevention application and the request for modified supplement amount. Or as adjusted by the Iowa Department of Education. Roll call vote please.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Dr. Walkley?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle?
Yes.
Mrs. Canwisher?
Yes.
And Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Moving on to the five-year capital projects plan.
So we'll go ahead and Leland, Mike and myself, we've been working very diligently on this. I wanna thank the two of them for the time that they put into this. When you go through, you'll see our five-year plan of where we are. The items in green are considered our base year of twenty-four, twenty-five, which can roll into the summer. And then twenty-five, twenty-six can be the start at the end of summer into the next school year. But one of the questions that's come at some of our board meetings is what does classroom modernization mean when you see that number? So actually what we have done this year, and if you go into your attachments, I think it's the third attachment or so that we have. Uh, maybe one more. There you go perfectly, right there. Leland and I have gone out to all the buildings. We meet with the building principal, we walk their building. We ask them what they would like to see happen and then we come back and try to figure out, what do we put on the summer list? And so when you look at this big sheet here, a lot of the items that you see, easier to see on this sheet. Are things that have been transformed over onto our five-year plan of things that we'll be trying to address this summer. Items in gray, for example, the Pleasant View Music Room floor. That is one that we probably won't do this summer, but it's keeping on the list for possibly the next summer. Um, and with construction, we'll kinda see where all these play out and how much we can get done between even now. Cause Leland started some of these projects. If we can get into carpet in some classrooms over breaks, we'll do that too. But. This, all of this information here you see here is on the five-year plan under classroom remodelingization in most cases.
So the gray sections you said might be all over is that, that's a resource problem, uh, like people problem or a dollar problem?
Probably more of a dollar problem. Yeah, and then also just time as well. Um, when you look at some of the things that like, for example, junior high, the flyout, the fi- floor tile in the restrooms would be great to do it. But it's not like it has to be done. Um, and that bathrooms are pricey. Products there, as Leland keeps reminding me. So that's that page, but we're gonna go back to the big five-year plan. Thank you, Heather. And then do you wanna go through and just kinda summarize some things we're looking at doing here this summer?
If we, I mean, if we look at this one, a lot of this has been done, like the Bridgeview office rooftop unit. That's about ninety-five percent complete already. Uh, a lot of the classroom modernization. Cody has got a lot of rooms that they've got carpeting in there that's fifteen to twenty years old. And it's, it's, it's actually, their carpet's actually in pretty good shape. It's just when you walk in, it's predated. Forest Grove overall is in pretty good shape. Uh, we do have. The, if you look at where the chillers are at, you probably don't even know where they're at, but if you were standing in front of the building, if you looked off to the left. There's an extension above the, the brick wall and that covers up the actual chiller area. And when they built that, they built the walls high and they did not put any ventilation through those walls. So now you have this chiller is trying to release heat. You can't get rid of it. We lost, we lost a compressor there last year and that's what caused it. So we're looking at lowering that wall like anywhere from twelve to twenty inches. Just so we can get more heat out of that space and probably looking at cutting some holes in the bottom of it so air can come in there, it can breathe. So that's what that is. Yeah, it just those, and those are things. That's the way it was built. It wasn't designed by us, but we just have to try to change it and correct it.
So is that, that's a design problem then, isn't it?
Design problem.
What, what, what responsibility, going back to the contractor that we employed to do this? Say, hey, you know, this could be a problem and we need to put ventilation in here. At some point. There has to be some responsibility on a fairly new school.
Yeah, cause it's not the contractor, cause he put it in exactly what, like it was designed. So it goes back to design and engineering part of it.
FRK?
It could be FRK or it could be, in this case, IMEC. It could be either one.
So are we, do we try and make them aware of this issue? What happens in that regard?
I would say yes.
We just don't get much traction with it.
Yeah, timeframe is just, you don't get much passed. It's reimbursement is very hard to get back, I would say.
We're not disagreeing with you. We've tried. We've tried multiple times with other items too, that like this should have been caught ahead of time.
I would say right now, some things, when if it's during construction, after, after construction, we've been withholding money and not giving it back to them. And so they get something fixed. That's probably our best bet we can do. And we're doing that right now at.
Forest Grove.
Yep.
Um, junior high is a good place, but Forest Grove, we have not paid one of the contractors yet. Pretty good chunk of money.
I understand it's not a contractor's problem. People are gonna be pointing fingers.
Yeah.
But we have used IMEC exclusively. We have used FRK almost exclusively. We've come back for repeat business, both of these. So at some point, you would expect that, yeah, it might be a little bit out. Design issue, all right, how are we going to reconcile this? Because maybe we need to look at other options then. If that is, if it's gonna cost taxpayer a month. That's all that I'm saying is that, yeah, I understand that they have, they have a, they have a. Maybe, you know, it's an extended time and, and this has been an issue, but if it's been linked back to that. And they know that we've had, we've been repeat customers. Many times they will try and make it right.
Yeah, and that doesn't necessarily mean having to reimburse us for paying to get it fixed. But maybe it's a service in the future for another project we're using them on or something like that.
Or you know what? Let, let's just re-put the, these walls and then we're not gonna cost you, charge you for it.
And in the last year, FRK, there's been at least twice where they've eaten the cost of, of different issues. I can't tell you exactly what, what. Which is where, but I know it's happened at least twice in the past year. They came back and said, we'll cover the cost.
We've done mul- multiple projects in the year, in the fourteen years I've been on the board and we've exclusively used FRK. And we've only used IMEC. I mean, it used to be, you know, Miss Stanley, then it became IMEC.
They bought each other out.
I know some IMEC people that I'm gonna.
Yeah, there's a bunch of IMEC parents, so.
So I, I, I just think that, that I would like to see that pursued on behalf of the taxpayers because we do repeat business with them.
I was gonna say, but if we scroll back up to that Bridgeview project, I realize it's just a hundred thousand. We actually used Chive Hattery for that one.
Okay.
So just, it goes exactly what you're saying. You know, we didn't go exactly exclusive to them. It's like, let's start looking other places. And just make, make sure that they're aware that we're not just going to hand it over to them.
Other options we can add to it.
There is.
We are having, you know, if we're having repeated issues and they're not. If we're early, helping to rectify issues from, you know, other businesses that might. Either A, correctly do a better job upfront, B, recognize that they had the error here and need to.
The concern is, is that, you know, each, each of these structures went up. One went up second. And someone should have been able to say, this has a vent here and we're blocking it. You know, it just. It seems odd that someone wouldn't catch that too.
My instinct from a preventative perspective is in contract, the architecture design firms responsible for knowing what this. Specifications right for the, are that are going in place. We should simply have a clause in there that in perpetuity, if they didn't design it. For the equipment that went in on the install date, they pay for the fix period.
That would prevent future issues.
Yeah.
I happened to catch a story on the news, I think it was either today or yesterday, about Davenport School Board is voting on a bunch of construction.
New junior high, smart middle school.
Um, do we have concerns, as I saw Bruce Builder's name was one of the main people that they were considering. Um, do we have concerns that, you know, locally, some of the vendors that we've been leaning on are gonna be spread too thin?
I think it's a good question. They're spread pretty thin right now or ready from a worker standpoint. I mean, that's probably our biggest fear that we keep. Our weekly, not weekly, bi-weekly that we have.
We're actually talking about.
Yeah, cause when I saw that, I was like.
Can't exclude them from bidding either.
Sure, yeah. I have another question, maybe a little bit off topic, kind of. Um, so when I was looking at this, um. And then the list of what you're gonna be working on this summer. Um, do things that the schools want um, to, to do from a like a safety standpoint, like the um. Windows, I'm gonna call them stickers, but you know what I mean? The um, where you can't see in, but you can see out.
Yep.
Um, are those types of projects included in what kind of your tracking or would that be something separate that the school would have on its own?
Depends if, cause if it's blinds, then it's exact, it's actually in here. But if it's the other type, then it's not.
Okay.
It depends upon also, like the junior high when it was part of the new addition, instead of putting blinds up, then we paid for those.
Right.
A lot of times you see as PTAs are willing to help pick up that cost.
Yeah, and that's why I asked, because I know at Riverdale specifically, that was one of the things on our, you know, three-year budgeting plan was. That was on the wish list. Um, so I was, I didn't see like a lot of safety related things. Um, so I was just curious if that was kind of a separate budget.
Yeah, and in terms of a safety, what they're putting on right now is more decorative. Um, you know what?
Like decal type?
Thank you. Yeah, decals, but.
Yeah.
Uh, there is a safety film that you could put on windows that we've explored as well. We have costs for that, but we just have not pulled the trigger on it. So that's bad to say. We have not moved forward. At this time, so we have those, but those are more decorative. One that we do tell, just be careful if you do that. Um, like, oh, well, put it on the main, on all their main doors. Looks great. But the problem is when you walk up to it, you can't see if someone's coming from the other side. So it's had, if someone opened the door and you then also you smash someone's hand, so keeping them off the main door itself, so you can always see is important.
Um, I had a question about Cody. I thought we had talked about, um. At some point, expanding at Cody because they've increased the number of um, sections per grade and um. The, you know, gym, the library, the cafeteria were designed around smaller schools. Um, but I don't see that as part of the project. I didn't know if that was because we don't see the need. You know, that we're kinda kept there and we don't see that further expanding, so it's not necessarily um, necessary at this point or.
Yeah, it's a great question. So right now, remember, we have, in our five, or actually say, it's our long-term view of Pleasant Valley six fifty. When we look at our elementary schools, our question, we have plans that we could potentially add on to Cody. Uh, FRK is looking at, you know, what we're looking at Bridgeview very roughly. And then we'd also have the new land that we purchased. We needed a new school. Right now, our projection is we're putting a pause on all of those. Because we're in a very good place in terms of seats with Forest Grove. We have there still. And what we do have at Cody being a three-section building, um, we're hoping that. Be a little pre- reprieve here in terms of having to add on to either one of those two schools or building a new one right now.
Back to your questions a little bit, when we did the football stadium, when we just did the field and track, we just Chive Hattery for that one too. So we've been branching out and looking at other options. Hope well, no. Hope well, Hope well's just got, uh, a lot of theirs is gonna be around the playgrounds and painting. Uh, I'm not sure, Hope well in the back, the. Well, they've got the basketball hoops and stuff like that. They've got quite a few that are leaning. So we're looking to get those corrected. They've got, also have some sections of concrete in the rear. That's cracking. Uh, when they originally stabilized the ground for Hope well. It wasn't truly stabilized with good soil. So everywhere around it is, we're constantly having trouble with potholes. And when I say potholes, not in the parking lot. It's sinkholes. Where almost like if you've ever plant, taken a tree out and it's, every couple of years, you're starting to fill it back in. A whole lot there is that way. Forest Grove was totally done different. Forest Grove, we actually took all the topsoil, took it off, stabilized the whole lot before we actually built on it. Hope well was not done that way. So we have different issues everywhere. We're like. All the basketball hoops are all leaning because it's, the ground is just not solid. Um, the parking lot, the blacktop parking lot is, actually has some divots and some rot- rolling going on in it. And in the rear where it's concrete, the concrete's cracking. So that's, that's where a lot of the focus is at, at Hope well. Pleasant View, Pleasant View's got a lot of ceilings and carpet that needs to be replaced. Uh, electrical switch gear has already been done. We've probably done half of the, the carpet in the classrooms already. That's been done over, over the breaks. Riverdale. The good news there is we've gotten rid of all the wallpaper as far as in the hallways. Uh, the domestic hot water boiler replacement, we actually pre-did. The, uh, it's not a typical water heater. The water heater was actually. The, uh, it's not a typical water heater, the water heater was actually supplied and it worked off the main boiler system. It'd be like running your boilers, your furnace year-round just to provide hot water. So this year we separated that. So when we go to replace the boilers, it would be a lot easier to separate it, cause now we have two separate systems, they're independent from each other. Uh, we did have the seclusion rooms. Uh, one, one air conditioner replacement. The high school. Of course, we have the, we have the scoreboards done, the west chiller's done, the, there's a secondary west chiller going in as part of the new construction project. The pads poured for that. You might see that on that new pad here in the next couple of weeks already. They're actually working on the chiller. The additional chiller for the, uh, for the addition right now on that. Press box, uh, press box, hopefully it'll be this spring. That one's been hard, cause we've, with our football team going late last year. And then the weather come in, we couldn't work on it in the fall. But some of the, uh, the windows and stuff were, were poor graded windows. So the water was coming in through the windows and then going down the walls and inside and just rotting out the walls and the flooring. So that all has to be gutted, but it's, how high is that in the air? So, yeah, you'll see JLGs and stuff out there, cause they'll be doing that for the rear, for the rear parking lot.
Is that restroom by the social studies, um, in the high school, is that the last restroom to be renovated? From the real old?
No, so we would have the social studies one up there, and then we'd also have over in the math wing. There's a men's restroom that needs to be renovated yet as well. Those are probably the two, uh, main ones that we have. And then just a few others down the social studies hallway that are smaller that we'll redo as well.
Yeah, that's for me next year.
Is the next one, yeah. And junior high.
Yep, big thing is, is to get the softball field back and going again, so.
And then dugouts would be for both the softball and the baseball fields, we didn't put those, we'll put those back in.
Two-way radios, we're still working on that. Instead of. The overall cost to replace all the radios was. Over a hundred thousand dollars. So we're looking at reusing the radios we have and just reprogramming them. What's that?
There are, as you're talking, I'll have that number four.
Of course, we have the playgrounds in there, and then we also have the safety grants, and a lot of that was for cameras. The cameras are actually. Brian and I haven't talked about this, but actually, we're, I think we're doing, we're at a pretty good clip. For the camera upgrades right now. I'd say we're actually ahead of schedule. Cause we're one, at January first, we're just one year into the two-year prob, you know, into the two-year process, and we're doing pretty well.
Eighty-two radios so far, hundred eighty-two is needed.
And then the camera, you know, from the grant that, the two-year grant, that was to replace to all digital cameras, right? To throughout, throughout which buildings?
And then also putting in new servers as well, so that's separated from our current system.
The nice part, there's some of the buildings, the hard drives and stuff that are in them, you might have only been able to save like seven to ten days worth of data. And some of these, almost all will have at least two or three weeks, and will actually have two or three months, they can go back and review it if they need to.
And then you just go, kinda go through and look at, you know, year two, what those items are. If you would go to maybe the second document, first second, Heather, second attachment.
I'm running it.
Mike's, you're running it? Oh, perfect. Can you go to the second one then, Mike? There you go. Um, this one was put together because one of these that Leland has really tried to do when he came on board was looking at our chillers, our boilers and our roofs. And trying to put a plan together. We were not probably doing the best job we could be doing. In terms of replacement and staying ahead and having something break, and then we weren't ready to fix it. So you can see up here, what I've put up there in yellow is things that we currently, that Leland has put together, finished. And has a plan or has a plan moving forward on our five-year plan moving forward, so. Again, really trying to make sure all of our chillers and boilers are up to speed and the roofs aren't a good place. So that, I, again, kudos to Leland for that work that he's done here with us.
So do we replace these just because they're getting old, or do we set the money aside and then when it breaks, then we replace it?
Both. Because a lot of these are, they're estimates or guesses. If we looked at some of these, where the boilers. We have multiple boilers at some of the buildings, we have three and four boilers. So if, like right now, all the boiler ones that are on there, we haven't had issues with any of them. If we haven't had any issues, we have some redundancy in there, so we might have three boilers, but we only need two, so we have one as a spare in case one breaks down. If we see another need for somewhere else, we actually might slide that by year then. Say, let's, this one we thought we'd get on our five years out of, it's given us issues and problems, we gotta replace it.
Yeah, I, I was hoping that we just don't replace it, especially if it's a good working item.
Correct. We also look at the number of years. Biggest, probably our, my biggest fear is these chillers. There's only one for the whole building. If you go to Cody, there's just one chiller, there's no backup. So if it goes down, you have no air conditioning.
And that can be for weeks.
Yeah, it's gonna be weeks, these days it can be for months. What's that? Go to Best Buy for parts, no. But to be honest, a lot of this old equipment actually works better than the new equipment.
So maybe, um, I'll, I'm gonna share two more up here with you, then you guys can kinda look at the five-year plan yourselves, but a couple of things moving forward. A couple, sorry, just saying that same document there, Mike. A couple of big things on that you see right now, I mean, Catherine, you brought up, you know, other additions or projects, we're doing like a Cody, or what does this look like? One that we have in our sheet that will be coming out maybe in the bidding in November twenty twenty-five, potentially opening in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. We'll be looking at Pleasant View Elementary is one of our schools where if you've been in there, there's just not a lot of office space. We are just. There's just nothing, and it has never had, really had a remodel like some of our other buildings. So one thing we're gonna talk about with our architects next, or actually this Wednesday, is visiting with them about what could that look like to redesign that office area? When you walk in, but then also where the patio is by the cafeteria, could you build out there? And make that space kind of a nice drop-off in the back, so it kind of looks some of other schools, and just has a nice entrance, both the front and the backside. Um, and then adding office space, redo what we currently have for our principal's office, nurse's office. And our counselor's office, has a counselor's office, dean's office, and copier room kind of all in one. So we just need space, so that's one of the projects that we're thinking about, around three million. And then our high school CTE project, um, looking at, we are busting at the seams because of our teachers doing a great job in our. Uh, family consumer science and our, uh, cooking, our foods classes. So we really need to look at that whole area, what can we do differently? So we'll be talking about that, and that would also include construction, automotive. Uh, what the plan would be to tear down our, um, metal shed that's out there, if you look at this football stadium, it's right, that's our automotive place. That could just come down and we build a nice, um, CTE expansion area there, so. Roughly thinking maybe eight million dollars for that, we'll have to see. And then, you know, the elementary's the, to be determined, that's again, just because of enrollment, where are we at, when's it have to be, but we have plans. Um, we have options. We're ready to move forward with that, we could have that ready to go, so, in one of three places. So take some time, look at the five-year plan, but really, again, this is just when you see classroom remodeling or modernization in years three, four and five. It's really the things we just talked about, where we sit down and try to figure what we need to do moving forward.
When you meet with the architects for the main office, is that, um, something they bill us for? That meeting where they plan it out, or is that, um, a kind of way to see what they could offer and see what the cost might be before moving forward?
There's typically a cost to that, I can't tell you what that cost is when they sit down and do that initial phase.
Sounds like the preliminary meetings that we're gonna meet and talk about this week, there's no cost to that. But once they bring staff in to interview us and they interview staff at the building, then there's a cost involved.
And that's IMAG that you're gonna be talking to?
It'd be FRK. They've done a real good job with that, they've actually interviewed, they'll interview every department that's affected by the addition, get their input. Uh, it's not just, the only issue we run into is people think that if they bring up their idea that it's automatically gonna happen. And that doesn't always happen, so.
So let's maybe shift to Mike's side of this, which is the budget tier aspect and kinda go through and see where the numbers go, yes.
I have one other question. So for this summer on the maintenance, you want a new box truck, a new SUV, a new escape, right? Can you just kind of? Give us some more clarification on that, when you say box truck, SUV and escape. When you say a new box truck, what is, which one is that? Like, that's for what?
Now, there's three of them, there's actually, one's got over two hundred thousand miles on it, that's the old spare. Uh, there's another one's got a hundred thirty-seven thousand miles on it, that, that goes and does mail. It's the mail delivery truck, it takes laundry around. Even here, they pick up garbage here and take it to different places, wherever, and then the third one is food service, they have three of them. And it's, I'm not sure, the food service is, it's over, it's probably a hundred fifty, a hundred sixty thousand miles too.
And really ideally, we could probably use two, one for the, still, or the maintenance side, and then one for food service as well. We try to get a purchase of a box truck through food service, state won't allow it.
What does those normally run?
Uh, I can tell you, I have it on my sheet, I think.
Does the box truck run?
Eighty thousand, seventy thousand?
I wasn't that fan. And, and it should get better. The Ford for years offered special pricing for governments. Shortly after COVID, they removed all that, so you paid where everybody else paid. And if you've been by a Ford dealer lately, they got plenty of inventory, so I'm hoping the rebates and stuff come back for government purchases.
What about these new SUV here? This is like to take kids or whatever, uh, if they wanna do, like to events, is that what that one is for?
That's what one of them is, and, but there's, the other one's for. I'm trying to think exactly what this group's calling, I wanna say special needs, or it's.
We have special students that were, maybe I take a student to Edison, or I might take a student to, um, Davenport for class. You know, just when we're transporting one or two stick, kids at a time, it's better to put them in like an, uh, escape or something like that versus a big SUV.
So that says, but that's what the new escape is for then.
Correct, yes.
But it doesn't have to be a Ford escape, it could be just something similar.
And that needs really gone up though, it's gone from one student to, at times, eight. The problem is, you, they might be going to, they go to three different locations. What happens when they're going to different locations at the same time?
And who, and who, who transports them?
So a lot of people.
We've got a lot of people.
I mean, in honesty, it's one of those where we try to hire somebody and it's, uh, there's not much time in between, so how do you hire them? Or you find someone and then they quit after a short period of time, so it really is, it's Leland, it could be Kim in his office and.
It's Holly. It's one person with a junior high too, that helps out.
Sorry, just wanted to get clarification on that. Alright.
Alright, this two-page document that I have on the screen here kinda summarizes, well, there's two main funds that. Our capital projects are paid for out of, one is the PEPAL, Physical Plant and Equipment Levy Fund. So the first page summarizes the revenue and expenses for the PEPAL fund. And then the second page of this document, the other fund that expenditures are paid out of is the Capital Projects Fund. Which is basically the main revenue for the Capital Projects Fund is our statewide penny. The one per, one percent sales tax that goes from the statewide penny is the main revenue for that fund. So going back to the first page of the PEPAL fund, I have it broken down into. The top half of the page is revenue items and the bottom half of the page is expenditure items. You see I have highlighted here for the voted PEPAL, one thing that we need to keep in mind is. Our voted PEPAL is currently set to expire at June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight. So we will want to, um, hold an election to extend the voted PEPAL. Sometime well before June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight. You can't do it too far in advance, um, is my understanding. I think it has to be within a couple of years of the expiration date. But we will wanna start thinking about, um, when we wanna hold that election to extend the voted PEPAL. Currently, in the current base year, we are bringing in three million, just under three million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars from the voted PEPAL. That's a dollar thirty-four per thousand of taxable valuation. Then we have the board-approved PEPAL. Each year when we do our certified budget, that's when we approve the board-approved PEPAL to. Keep going for the next year. We're currently bringing in a little over seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in property tax revenue. In the current year from the board-approved PEPAL, which is thirty-three cents per thousand dollars of taxable valuation. We did just receive our most recent evaluations a couple of weeks ago, um, from Scott County or from the state. Our evaluations are, our regular evaluations are up, I think about a little over five percent for this last year. Our TIF valuations did go down a bit from this past year. And that's because, especially in the city of Leclerc, a lot of the TIF valuations are starting to roll off and come back into the regular valuations. So this, uh, five-year plan does reflect those most recent valuations that we received just a couple of weeks ago. Then you see all of the other various revenue line items here under PEPAL. We, of course, have our SCRA grant for the playgrounds that are being put in. We have donations from the PTAs for the playgrounds, budgeted into here. And then the stadium scoreboard, we have donations showing under revenue from high school athletic boosters and other donors. And so those, and then here you see the safety grant that we've talked about earlier, we, we have the safety grant revenue on this line. So that, that shows you all of the various revenue lines, and then for expenditures. We, we categorize our expenditures in PEPAL, we have four hundred thousand dollars each of the five years. Set aside for ongoing repairs and summer projects. So those are a little bit smaller, um, expenditures than what you would see on the previous page that we were looking at, which is the. Bigger dollar expenditures. District-wide technology, we are currently budgeting nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, most of the years on here. Actually, all of the years on here for district-wide technology line, we show nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars budgeted. You do see in year two, which would be the twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year now. We have three hundred thousand dollars set aside out of technology for access points. Have anything to add or explain on that?
You know, access points, you know, all the things where you would probably have one here, but they're up in the ceiling, that's, you know, where we connect everything to. Um, they're to the point now where they need to be replaced, um, with the age of where they are, so Kevin will do that, and he'll also, um. Get, uh, funding for that to help the E-rate grants, he'll get that to help offset the cost.
Then we have a line on here for tran- transportation and capital equipment, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars set aside in the budget. Each year for that, so those are those box trucks and other vehicle purchases, those types of things. Um, come out of the transportation and capital equipment line. Our copiers in the district that we lease are paid for out of PEPAL, so we're paying about eighty-five thousand dollars. Each year for copier leases out of PEPAL. Um, then you see, if you go down here, the scheduled projects line, those are the bigger dollar items. You would have seen on the previous page that was shared earlier. Then we, we continue to have a, um, PEPAL. We borrowed against future PEPAL receipts back in two thousand eighteen, and so we're continuing to make payments, principal and interest payments on that. Um, loan, so you see the principal line and the interest line for the PEPAL repayments that are being done. So basically, those are the main expenditures that come out of PEPAL. And then on the second page, the Capital Projects Fund, as I said earlier. The main line that we, of revenue that we have is the one cent penny where we're bringing in, just under seven point six billion. just under seven point six billion dollars this year projected from the statewide penny. And expenditures under PEPAL, you see the, we have done, well, four previous, well, actually, five previous borrows now against future sales tax revenues. Back in two thousand fifteen, we did our first borrowing against sales tax revenues. That one was actually paid off in the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, so that one is paid off now. But we still have payments to make through the two thousand twenty-nine, two thousand thirty year. So through this year that I am showing here, we have payments still to make on the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen borrowings that we had done against sales tax. And then you may recall, just last year, we did our last borrow against sales tax for the high school building addition. That one actually is scheduled to not be paid off until the two thousand forty-four, two thousand forty-three, forty-four fiscal year. So that's what that line is, the money that we transfer out of um the one cent sales tax into the debt service fund to pay the principal and interest payments on that borrowing. So the big thing to look at is this line here where it says ending fund balance, PEPAL and capital projects funds combined. So you can see, at the end of the current twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, we still have about nine and a half million dollars between those two funds. Uh according to our projections, at the end of next fiscal year, the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year, we could possibly go into the negative on those two funds combined. And then you can see the year after that, we go, a couple of years after the, we go further into the negative on the combined PEPAL and capital projects fund. So what that means is, if this projection is pretty close to being accurate, depending on how things play out, we could possibly be needing to look at doing another borrowing of money towards the end of next fiscal year, the end of the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year, or early in the two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year. Um we have started, we have contacted Matt Delesby from Piper Sandler and had made him aware of that. Actually, the last time he had done his cash flow projections, he was coming up with the same timeline that we would probably need to look at borrowing again towards the end of next fiscal year or the beginning of the fiscal year after that. So there is another borrow, unless we would change some things and switch some things around, we would need to do a relatively small while compared to the last one we did anyway um in the next fiscal year or two. And Matt did indicate to Brian and I that we do still have the, some capacity to borrow against future sales tax revenues. A little bit of capacity to possibly borrow if we needed to against PEPAL. And then, and then of course, we still have a lot of capacity to borrow if we were to do a general obligation bond. But again, the difference between a general obligation bond and borrowing against future PEPAL or future sales tax revenue, a general obligation bond requires a sixty percent vote and it would raise property taxes, it would be funded by a property tax as opposed to borrowing against PEPAL or sales tax revenue, which would not affect property taxes, cuz you're just borrowing against future revenues that you'd be getting from those two sources.
Right now, the numbers that Mike are showing you would be including the Pleasant View addition and also the high school CTE expansion, that's part of these numbers that you're seeing here.
I noticed the scheduled projects kinda drops off a cliff, is there a reason? It's projected to decrease dramatically, cuz the list you have looks like pretty routine maintenance to me. So I'm not sure I understand why it doesn't just repeat.
In terms of which projects?
Um so the scheduled projects line of financials goes from a seven-figure number to a much smaller six-figure number.
Kind of focus a lot on the first couple of years, but uh by the time we get out to year, you know, years two, three, four, and five, things will change, this is a living document, correct Brian?
I guess my point is it could be a lot worse.
Yeah, I mean, right. Overall, we're getting in a good, pretty good place in our district in terms of where we are at with projects, in terms of those roofs, shelters, borders, having that in place, the new additions that we've done recently, that hopefully we are getting to more, some of just stability and not having to spend as much, but.
Oh, I see, so some of the scheduled projects, this is the big ticket item hitting us, and then maybe if it's out, they'll be gone and we won't have this big ticket item.
That's why it wanes off.
You mentioned the TIFs in Leclerc. And I know that uh you know, Leclerc was very heavily TIF'd for a while, and that's all coming off. It's solely, has there been new TIFs in Leclerc since like over the last fifteen?
Um when the fairway store went in, I believe TIF dollars were used for that. They have, my understanding, not gone back to do, using TIF for residential in Leclerc.
There will be a TIF, I believe, for the YMCA project that continues to move forward also, the new YMCA in Leclerc.
And are almost all of them off of TIF now?
They're not all off of TIF, but they're continuing to roll off. One of the big reasons for the decrease in TIFs this year from Leclerc.
And I know that when um TVK was built, you know, we had approved them to have TIF, do you remember how long that was?
Pretty long.
Was it a long TIF?
They're fifteen years long.
Yeah, it wasn't a twenty.
And it went in in what year, twenty?
Probably four years ago or so, I'd be guessing. And that, I think there's only been one. Check it out, has there been one or two out there on that project? If there's been one TIF or two TIFs, I think it's just been the one TIF only on that one.
So, but we still get the PEPAL. And all, and all these TIFs, we still get the PEPAL.
That's correct, yes. So the revenue comes in for that.
But is that, is that kind of in your projections here too, when, when these things are coming off TIF?
Um well, what I did is I, I used an assumption on the valuations of our taxable valuations increasing three percent each year over the next five years. So that's just historically how it's been, so. If more and more TIFs roll off, then that could affect it.
We stay very conservative on future value, tax valuations and you always stay very conservative on enrollment.
As I say, Mike's always very conservative, cuz usually when we meet, it's never negative news, we have a little bit more than we expected. It's always good to hear. Oh yeah, I much, much, I always tell Leland, especially on expenditures, overestimate, don't underestimate, cuz I don't want any bad surprises.
Other questions that you have, but two things, things moving forward, we'll probably do another borrow, where again, we're talking to those individuals here next. Yeah, this week or next week, we'll be visiting with them about that as well.
No, the architects you're talking about, right?
Architects are Wednesday, and then we have the other one.
Tomorrow we have a meeting with Piper one.
But when we did the last borrow, we didn't have the new office at Pleasant View and we didn't have that really on our radar.
It was on our radar, yeah, but we just. Not in the borrow, no. Yeah, that was twenty, thirty million dollars that we borrowed from the high school. I think the other, you know, our big future projections, the other big ticket item that we have would be if we um added on to the gymnasium at the high school, that whole area, and we change our current competition gym into the forming arts center. That's about a thirty-six million dollar project um that we have, and it's a big ticket one that would be a future project. Unless we're gonna go do a general obligation bond, we're not in a position to do that the way we've always tried to do our financing, which is pay it through, you know, not big debts or at, going to property taxes.
Thank you, Leland.
Yeah, really, thanks to Mike and Leland for me doing that.
Alright, there's no required motion there, a lot of good information. Next is programming the upcoming legislation, legislative session, and Brian is going to speak on that.
Yeah, if you, just wanna give you guys kinda heads up as we start the new session, went into session today, it was the first day, so everyone was called to Des Moines. Tomorrow night, I believe, six o'clock will be the um state of the state address by Governor Reynolds. If you have a chance to watch that, it's always very good information to see what is gonna be coming up in legislative session. Under general housekeeping items, um you do have in your documents the timetable for what happens in the one hundred and ten days of session, so you can look at that. As you know, Lieutenant Governor Chris Knoyer's seat has come open at District Thirty-five for us. Um if you were to go like on I eighty, go north and really stay out of, I'll call it, kind of the downtown section, the housing section of Leclerc. Um and so by I eighty up to about territorial in that area and north, that would be District Thirty-five. So we do have some people who will be voting on January twenty-eighth for the Democratic and Republican candidates. So if you have anyone in those areas, um you can let them know, Catherine, that'd be some of your area as well. And the two candidates right now are Katie Woodington, she's the Republican, and then Mike Zimmer is running as the Democratic um person as well, so there's a forum this Thursday night at six o'clock, it will be streamed if someone wanted to watch that. The place they're having at the satellite office only has about room for fifty people, so not a huge crowd can attend, but it is viewable there. Um one thing that's always very important when we meet with our legislators is to share our appreciations first um and just say, what's been going well, what we thank you for last year's um legislative final bills that were signed. You can see I put down there's some talking points for you for raising the teacher salaries. Last year, forty-seven, five, now this coming year will be fifty thousand dollars, which hopefully will retain and bring people to the state of Iowa. So we're appreciative of that. I think supporting our teacher and a par educator registered apprenticeship, the TRPA, even though there's been some red tape legal things that just take a lot of work, that have been frustrating, I think. Um and luckily, Davenport manages this grant for all of us. But it has produced some very good results, we've hired some people out of this, so we're very glad that that was put in place, especially in the area of special education, so again, thank them for the TR, TPRA grant that was put in place. And then the reim- implementation, the March first open enrollment deadline, Debbie might be the happiest for that one. Um and what all that has played out for us, and actually, it has been a very good thing um for open enrollment. Uh I will talk about that a little bit later, cuz I think it'll come back up again this coming year. And then again, just remembering, our legislators get pulled in a lot of different directions, and there's a lot of asks of them all the time. And I think it's just listening to them, if they have questions, um Gary Moore texted me already today, first day in session. So it's always just staying in contact with them, knowing they can come ask us about educational topics um that we can hopefully give them some advice when they're talking to everyone up there at the Capitol. You see our uh board priorities, which we mentioned before. Anticipated topics for this session, again, this is just what I've been hearing and kinda wanna put on your radar to listen for. I think preschool is gonna be a hot topic, um do they move towards the full day versus half-day preschool, and what will that look like? Uh you have pros and cons to that, so hopefully they ask a lot of questions um as to what really a full-day preschool could look like. The SSA, again, we always hope that we will hear about that within thirty days of session. And hopefully, I think, if you ask us, it doesn't bode anyone well to go in and say, hey, we want five percent, we want six percent, we want seven percent. Cuz the reality is it's not gonna happen. So really, it's probably more asking, hey, can we have two pers- two and a half percent, three and a half, or three percent? And just give us stability so that we know what it's going to be. I don't see, I mean, I just don't see the big percentage coming back at any time soon. So hopefully let us know sooner versus later. Property taxes, that is gonna be a big topic again this year, it was last year. One thing that scares me a little bit, property taxes, you know, right now, personally speaking, if you're getting close to retirement age, that's been a huge change with not taxing income tax in retirement, that's a big deal. Um I think when you look at the flat tax that's coming, again, that kinda helps everybody as well. I think for corporate, there also is a flat tax there, those are all things people like. But my scary part is, when you cut property taxes or you reduce um uh income tax, there's only really one tax left, and that's sales tax. So unless they change the funding formula for schools or governments, we'll have to see how all that plays out and what that looks like moving forward. So keep that on your radar. Student information system, like our infinite campus, there's discussions in the state about making sure all schools have to have the same student information system. Pros of that, I can see it from pulling data, the negative is all the schools just have to train new people on new systems, it's not one that you have. Uh also, we purchase a lot of, I'll call it, um specially-designed programs when it comes to pulling data reports for us. If you change a system, those are gone, so we have some real concerns there. They talked about maybe going to the top two, which is one that we use, and they have like a funnel program that where they take all your data and it goes to the funnel program and the state can pull from that program, so we'll see where that plays out. Open enrollment deadline, I think one that we'd like to see here, especially with chronic absenteeism, is if families are getting pressure on absenteeism, they could easily leave us and go to an online school. Again, at any time they can enroll there, so that's a kind of a question about, should there be a March first deadline for online schooling as well? For some of the reasons that it occurs. Um and then cellphone policy, or sorry, um staff shortages, we'll see where that goes. And then cellphone policy, um I'm sure there'll be a topic, it'll probably come back to local control. We don't know where that will go, but keep that one on your radar as well. And then you can see the current four task force that are in place. Area education agencies, chronic absenteeism, school safety and security, and then the content standards. Those are all in place right now, meeting throughout this year. Uh we'll see what they come back with, decisions from those task forces at the state level. And then you can see who the three are right now that are representatives, along with the one to be determined after the January twenty-eighth voting. So please take this document, think about it, if you wanna reach out to your legislators, please do so. But just some talking points here to kinda guide us through how we can support and help our mission.
That's a really nice summary, thank you.
And that kinda goes along with our day on the hill coming up. No, is anyone planning on attending at this point?
Anyone wants to go, the Brian Struce bus will leave at five AM, you jump on. Depends on temperature.
I think Brent and I still have nightmares from coming back from. We came back in an ice storm. Traumatizing.
But in overall, you see your letters, please tell them thank you for all they do, I mean, it's a tough job for a hundred and ten days, there's lots going on there, so.
Alright, any other comments? Alright, so future dates, we have uh our next meeting, January twenty-seventh at six PM. We've got day on the hill, the twenty-eighth, if anyone decides to go to that, I think registration is open for at least another week or two, or yeah, at least another week.
I think it's right up to the minute.
Yeah, so if you decide last minute that you can make it. Um and then uh our net, uh meeting after that would be the February tenth meeting. I guess the meeting after that would be our February twenty-fourth meeting with the training that IASB is coming in for, so. Alright, twenty-fourth.